The City Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, September 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler is absent due to work.
You don't care.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor McCammon.
Here.
I need a motion to excuse Commissioner Kreidler. He is working out of state.
I will make that motion to excuse Commissioner Kreidler due to work.
Support.
Roll call, please. Vote.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
No.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor McCammon.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Approve the agenda. There is an addition to the closed session section of the agenda, so I need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 15B, Boy, to discuss an attorney opinion related to the city clerk dismissing an election worker.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda with the modification for 15B.
I will support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Is that person going to be here? Are they an employee?
It doesn't matter. All their stuff was already...
It's really...
I'm just asking a question.
Appeals in writing.
No, this is in relation to an attorney opinion.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Hang on a second. The attorney opinion has nothing to do with the person. It has to do with explaining the relationship between a city clerk and any election worker.
Okay. If it's an employee, it's a different story.
Yeah, it says "an election worker."
Right.
Okay. Anyone else?
One question. We had a request to remove or move 11I up because the person has to leave early. Are we going to do that? Under new business?
Yeah. Let's move it.
You did send us all a request to move that up.
The appeal is completely in writing. I mean, we have a bunch of city business that takes precedence over this, so I don't get it.
But we've always moved things if people can't be here. I mean, the gentleman's here. He requested that we do it because he has to leave early. We've done it for a lot of other people, so I don't see what the problem here is. Move it up, get it out.
Does that require a motion?
If you guys want to make... It's another motion to amend the agenda.
Let's do the first motion to amend the agenda to add the closed session, and then we can vote on the second motion to amend the agenda to move...
The first motion, though, is to approve the agenda as amended. Would we need to strike it down?
Well, if somebody should make...
I guess we could approve it and then approve it again with the second amendment.
I mean, I personally have no problem moving it. I mean, it has to be done one way or another. So I will amend my motion to, in addition to adding 15B, to move 11I to 11A.
Support.
I can re-support.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
That's okay. I supported the first one. I was going to say...
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion... Go ahead. Sorry. I almost said your job.
Go ahead. You're great.
Okay. That's it for that. All right, public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary.
I'd like to...
Go ahead.
My name's Lois Cameron.
You can go right there. Thank you.
Sorry. That way you'll be heard.
Yeah, because you got a microphone there.
I do have a big mouth.
Thank you.
Lois Cameron. I have property at 223 Harold Street. If you know the street, Harold Street, it's a one-lane, 18 feet with backyards on both sides facing the road. The front side is the water. Well, I'm here about this violation of blight. I spoke with Mrs. Taitman today. She gave me some good insight, but when I sat at home and thought about it again, I said to myself, basically, that is the only place I can put that 16-foot boat because I've lost at least two feet off the water due to all the high water in the last few years. And you're saying that, basically, it's a backyard. I mean, a front yard, according to the notice. It's my backyard. Now, if I can't have a boat that's 16-foot in my backyard, can anybody else in Marine City have that, too? That is my issue here. I have no problem paying the $75 for the violation of my boat being in my yard, but it should go against everyone that has property in Marine City, then. Should remove all the boats that are 16-foot and higher. That is my issue. Thank you.
Could you give the address just one more time? I'm sorry. I was trying to write.
223... Oh, Harold Street. You know where that is, correct?
Yep.
I have a 16-foot aluminum boat that was in my backyard, which is, according to the city, in my front yard. And it's not allowed there.
What's your address?
223 Harold Street.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Harold is a small road with backyards and the water property.
I mean, nearby.
Okay. Well, anyway...
Check it out.
I moved the boat, but I was thinking about it, and I said, that means I can't have a boat in Marine City. And I thought that was, like, wow. So I'm coming to you to try to solve this problem because it would be nice to have a boat. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I live at 230 South Main Street in Walnut Village, apartment number six. Across the street is Rotary Park, and it gets a lot of use, but there is no facilities there. Is there a possibility that we could get a porch on or something put in over there next spring, next summer, for the kids who are playing over there, and then they have to run home? It's like, this is just something I'd like to address. Thank you.
Hold on, hang on.
Yeah, Craig.
Anyone else? I need a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of August 18th, 2022.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Wait, wait. Sorry, I did have a couple things. Page three, bottom paragraph. And I do believe I mentioned this. I just wanted to add the addenda... Very last paragraph, just add the addendum that the park acreage be revised in the master plan. I'm certain I mentioned that.
You did.
It's...
Okay.
I just want it set for public record so that it makes sure that it gets changed because it's wrong to day. So we, you know, need to rectify that. And then, page 10, which was related to my discussion of having gone to a redevelopment-ready community... So, page 10, paragraph three. Just that the portion... The conference was not a dedicated redevelopment-ready community conference. It was a portion of which covered that. So that's, if you just added and briefly leap into a conference, comma, "a portion of which was," then the rest is perfect. Sorry for being nitpicky. I just wanted to make sure people didn't think that, oh, well, he's an expert. He went to this whole conference that was, you know, totally dedicated to it. Thank you. That is all.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent...
He didn't finish the vote.
I'm sorry. Opposed.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report. We have the departmental activity reports. We have the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals meeting minutes from July 6, 2022. We have the 300 Broadway Committee Meeting Minutes from August 8, 2022. We have a special event, the Marine City High School Homecoming Parade, which is going to be on October 7, which is a Friday night, going from... The parade is going to be going from Holy Cross to the Marine City Beach. And also, we're still in summer, but I have to talk about trick-or-treating hours on Halloween. Halloween is Monday this year, October 31st, obviously, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. So those are the trick-or-treating hours for Halloween. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm making motion. We approve the consent agenda, letters A through F.
Support.
Go ahead.
Okay. I do have one question under unfinished business on the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals regarding 110 South Water. It said that she was supposed to... Plan of action, which included listing the property for sale, and recommended bringing back to the board if a for-sale sign was not posted on the property within 30 days. Got anywhere on that because it's past 30 days?
Actually, at this point, she was in communication with us before our August meeting and let us know that she is in the progress of getting the status of personal representative of the estate. So it's tied up with probate right now. She's aware. We're going to follow up with her before our next meeting in October.
Cool.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Good.
Catch. Just, Jim wanted to give you credit for also discussing flocks on your report. That was... You had went to the commission meeting to discuss some other stuff, but flocks also, and thank you for that.
Anyone else? All right. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler... I'm sorry. Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor McCammon.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving down to financial business. Can I have a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, in the amount of $4,099,381.32?
I'll make a motion. We approve expenditures, including payroll, for $4,099,381.32.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead. Tax time.
Yes. On the of 17 document, page three. Just curious, are these the signs that were put up by the beach? It's the Donbros Sign Company. Are those... It says, Major Roads Traffic Service Supplies.
How many was it for?
Oh, sorry. 19512.
Those are the new signs in front of itself being full traffic down.
Okay. Cool. On the one regarding the sinking fund, I think it's the other next page, last one, because the sinking fund was struck down sadly, will we cease seeing these at some future juncture or...
It wasn't really struck down. It didn't pass, but it was still good for another year.
Right.
So it's still good for right now.
Right. It's still good for right now, but at some future juncture, we will stop seeing these unless they...
Unless they go for another.
Vote for it again, yeah. It was the extension of it was voted down. Right. This KCA Services does tree trimming, and I was just... Are all these city properties or are they... Because some stuff was like a storm-damaged tree. Does the city take onus?
If they're in our easements.
Okay. So if it's a between sidewalk and road tree? Got it?
Got it.
Thank you. On 10, the copier lease, it says final. Does that mean we're done?
We ended an old lease with our former company and got into a new one with a cheaper company, yeah.
It said payoff, so that's right.
Yeah.
So it does pay it off.
Yeah.
Okay. 17 of 17. Westshore Services. I was just curious, what... Is this for the... They sell, like, emergency equipment? Was it for the air raid siren?
We pay $600 to go on through and then work on our sirens.
Okay. Cool. Yeah. It was just a company I hadn't really heard... I was curious if it was for the...
It's under Central County, actually.
Okay. Okay. Almost done.
His fault.
No, I'm glad our sirens are up to snuff. That's great. The CoreLogic tax refund, is that just an overpayment or...
Where's that one at?
Sorry. Now we're on to the of 36 document, and it is five of 36.
Yes, CoreLogic has to do with the taxes. And that is... Yes. So they... It has to do with their upload of a database for taxes, and then I think that they overpaid in the beginning, so then we had to cut it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, this is the last one for this.
You're fine.
Yes, seven. The second-to-last entry, it lists description as Marine City Marina, but then it has 231 South Water. I was just curious, are we already paying electric at the Marina?
There's a light pole.
Oh. Oh, okay.
A safety light pole down there that we took over for, yeah.
Gotcha. It's an expensive safety light pole, though. $2,900 bucks.
Oh. No, that was like a $14 bill.
Oh.
Let me verif...
Is it the upper one, then? Is that...
Yeah.
I don't think it's the upper. Monthly fee at 16 South Main Street, which that would make sense.
That would make some sense.
But the next line item down says, description, Marine City Marina. And then, I believe it's chunked out that way, right? It has the check number, paid, then the GL number, description.
I'll verify what that is because I'm not certain. But, yeah, the 1496 is the light pole on the property that we took.
Which, no big deal. Yeah, that's...
But I'm not certain what this would be.
I mean, it does say monthly electric fee at 231 South Water, which is the water plant. Which, yeah, you guys are pumping stuff all the time. That makes total sense, but it's just weird that the description lists Marine City Marina.
It's probably just the format of the paper.
Okay. So just...
Yeah. Because that is the water, yeah.
Check for next time. Those are all my questions, and they were answered satisfactorily. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to make a point. Brian caught one of mine, so thanks, Brian. The only thing... We used to get a lot more description in these, and I noticed a lot of it's been cut out, and we did that for a reason so that we know what these items are. It's a little bit nicer if we could figure out what these things are without having to go through... You know what I'm saying? There's a lot of these that... It's so vague that that causes us to have to ask all the time, and we used to... I remember asking this a long time ago, and they started doing it, and it was more... A little bit more in-depth so that we know what the item is.
We will definitely try. I know with BSNA, they have... There's so many characters that you can put into lines, so sometimes you really have to, you know, break up what it is. So I'll talk to the treasurer and see if she can do it and try to summarize it within that character so it doesn't look like gibberish.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor McCammon.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Moving on to preliminary financial statements. I need a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements.
Motion to receive and file financial statements.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
I just noticed in some of these that we have some good losses on them. One in particular was concerning was the pension fund. That's... I just want to make this statement. That's it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had two questions. I was fine on the pension fund, but on page one, third chunk down in terms of fund balance listed, unearned revenue, is that taxes that are yet to be paid or not paid or unpaid?
That should be the ones that we have not collected yet.
Okay. But that's... It is a...
Earned.
Unearned.
And we will get it.
Tax. We hope to, yes.
They'll collect it at the county. Well, we will because the county buys out our unpaid taxes.
Oh, okay.
And then the county goes after the rest.
You get made whole by the county.
Yes.
Awesome. And on page 10, the due to taxpayers differed from what was listed in the expenditures. Maybe it's because it's a future due to taxpayers and not... I asked about that one. Is that the amount that the... What was it? That CoreLogic refunds? And you said that that was something that somebody had done early, had overpaid, and then I just... Should those two numbers jive, or that's from this... This is a paid expenditure and this is a...
Well, and the CoreLogic is one entity. It's one, like, company with mortgages and things like that.
Okay.
So it wouldn't encompass everybody.
Okay. So this may encompass the entire tax base of Marine City?
That's still... Yes.
I mean, it's not a ton from the grand scheme of taxes.
Right.
I just, again, wanted to fully, fully understand.
Yeah.
Okay. But they should be and are two different numbers for a good reason.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving down to public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing regarding ordinance 22-003, the Community and Economic Development Board Revision?
I make a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance number 22-003, Community and Economic Development Board Revision.
Support.
All right. Do we discuss?
Need a vote?
No.
We don't need to discuss because it's...
No, this is not our time. It's the public's time.
Yeah, you need a vote.
You just need a vote to go into the public.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now you hear from the public.
All right. Notice hereby given that the public hearing is open at 7:23 PM to receive public comments on ordinance 22-003, which is the Community and Economic Development Board Revision. Please limit your comments to five minutes.
Joe.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I wasn't looking up. You're so quiet and demure.
I'll take this mask off so you can hear me. Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the Community and Economic Development Board and as its current chairman, I'd like to address you on the subject of the upcoming ordinance for approval. What started out as a good idea at the time, the TIFSA Subcommittee, if anything came out of that, it was the idea that we needed to develop this board. It was a good idea at the time. It turned out to even be a better idea over the last couple of years. We've put together a group of people, volunteers, all from the City Commission, the Planning Commission, the TIFSA Board, the post-COVID Chamber of Commerce. We have other business leaders than members of the Chamber of Commerce, and we have two citizens at large, all volunteers, all of whom have spent more time than what is required by the meeting schedule. And as a group and as individuals, we've done some pretty neat things for this town. Ideas come forth. We take a look at them. We flesh them out. We get information and data. We find funding. In some cases, we bring that to you guys. I know we don't do a good enough job of that, Commissioner, but we try. And we've done some good things. We've got... We've taken action. We've gotten good results for the town. The ordinance before you allows us to continue to do the level of work that this board has risen to. I think we're an asset to the community. We will continue to be an asset for the community. This ordinance will give us the foundation that we need to continue to move forward. We've still got some good ideas in the hopper, and we continue to be committed to working for the development of this city economically and for the betterment of the community as a whole. So I would hope that you would pass this ordinance, and I know that the members of the board that work with me would hope that you would, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is there any questions? Anyone want to ask a question or... I don't know if that's appropriate. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The public hearing is declared closed at 7:27 PM. Unfinished business. Let's go down to ordinance number 22-003, the Community and Economic Development Board Revision, Second Reading and Adoption. So I need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 22-003 for the Community Economic Development Board.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number 22-003 for the Community and Economic Development Board.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
So, yes. So, yes, in .003 of the ordinance, purpose and authority, you know, it kind of goes through what we discussed previously about having some sort of autonomy and their ability to be able to spend funds that they had raised specifically. But then in .05, it kind of seems to be slightly contrary to that, mentioning that, you know, commission is required for approval. However, and I'm leaning on you for this, kind sir, you know, is .05 just saying that, because it reads, "Approval of the City Commission shall be required prior to the Board or any members of the Board incurring any expenses in the performance of its duties." Is that to suggest that training or an expenditure that they incurred due to travel, say, or something like this, is that relegating it to that type of?
It's all expenses. It's like any other department or entity within the city, although, you know, like, we're going to look at later a purchasing ordinance. There are certain constraints on purchases. Jim is constrained by purchases and numbers and amounts. Ultimately, all expenditures come back to this commission, whether it's just to look at what you looked at tonight, to look at all the expenditures, and all of them get approved by this commission at some point. So it wasn't, it gives them autonomy, but it makes it clear that, yeah, those expenses are coming back to the commission.
They're still cited
Yep.
and made aware by the commission.
Yes.
But they, within .03, still have approval to do, you know, if they're
Right.
serving cake or something for a fundraiser, they're allowed to, and they raise the funds to do this, they can
And they're subject, they're subject to the constraints of the purchasing ordinance, which is a mirror image of your charter.
Anyone else? All right, roll call vote, please.
May I have a caiman?
I'm sorry? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I didn't hear what you said.
Commissioner Bryson?
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And now moving on to the Mill and Capp Street project. I need a motion to approve the estimated project cost to permit the DPW Superintendent Mike Getrich to move forward with a request for proposals on this project.
Did we get to see in private the, yeah, that's what I was waiting for. How close?
It's coming your way.
It's coming.
Thank you. Close? Good. Good job, Mike.
He's so good at that. He really is. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Close, yeah.
Okay, we need a motion?
Yes.
I do.
I'll make a motion that we, oh boy, long day, that we put the project of milling and capping Gladys, North Fourth Street, Metropolis, and Scott Street out for bid, as well as transferring the stated amount from the major street fund to the local street fund to help compensate for the project.
Support.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Was there extra, was there one street we cut out? I thought we had five.
I think in some of the previous descriptions, it had mentioned between this street and that street, maybe that.
No, I thought there was an extra street. I thought we had five at one time and then...that's fine.
Maybe originally at Infrastructure Committee, it might have been mentioned that there might be five?
Any other discussion? Let's get it back. All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
May I have a caiman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
Do you need these back?
Yes, I do.
Yes, please.
Thank you. New business. We need to appoint an election commission representative.
Get a vote.
What?
Nope, 11A.
Oh, sorry.
We switched 11A.
Sorry, sorry.
We're now 11
So go to 11I.
Is now 11A. Did I get all these back? I hope so.
So, Commissioners, let me put the appeal into some context. Under the Freedom of Information Act, members of the public are able to seek public records as defined under the act from the local government. In producing those records, the city is authorized under the act to provide and to issue fees consistent with an adopted policy on a fee schedule. Normally, the rules say that if you're going to have some search time, you look to the lowest hourly rate person who can manage the search, and if you're going to have copies, you have a preset fee schedule for copies. Also, under the Freedom of Information Act, if a FOIA request is denied, then the person is able to seek a first appeal to the head of the public body. A second appeal can go to the courts. The instance before you is a very narrow appeal related to the imposition of costs. It's not a denial of the request. It's the imposition of fees consistent with the request. So the person is able to come to the appeal challenging the imposition of the fees, and only the commission in this instance can waive those fees. The Freedom of Information Act allows the appeal to go to the person designated or to the head of the public body. In this instance, when I looked at the dialogue going back and forth, it was my opinion that the commission is also authorized to act as the head of the public body and would act so in this case. So the appellant will make a presentation on the nature of the appeal. You will hear from the FOIA officer who developed and imposed the fees for the FOIA. Then you can do three things. You can uphold the decision of your FOIA officer on the fee. You can reverse the imposition of the fees set forth by your FOIA officer with respect to the fees, or you can do something in the middle. But that would be your decision. So tonight, you're acting as the head of the public body under FOIA, and you will receive and make a decision on the appeal. So I think you'll hear from the person making the appeal, and then you'll hear from the clerk, and you are free to ask questions of either. So with that, we would start the appeal. I think, Phil, this is your appeal?
Yes.
And just, let's just be very careful. This is, this appeal is of the fee only, so there's no reason to get into the nature or substance of the request or the documents. This is about the imposition of the fee.
I'll make my presentation quick. I put a FOIA request in. I know the fee's small, it's only $7.06, but it's the principle that I'm basically appealing on. The information I requested should have already been searched and already in possession of our city's clerk or city's FOIA officer. It was in regards to a termination of election inspector on July 25th. I wanted to know what the procedure was. I put in an appeal, I put in a FOIA request on August the 8th. So that's literally just a little over probably 10 days. And then I got an email back from the FOIA officer saying they were going to charge a fee of $7.06 because they had to go back through several things and look for the procedure, look for this, look for that, and then cross-reference with their ordinances. Ultimately, I'm seeing it as, why am I being charged a fee when, if our city clerk had just used a procedure to perform that function at physical capacity, I feel like then I'm paying for the clerk to do their primary job function as opposed to a search of public records that should have already been in place, done, and the city clerk should have already known what that procedure was. And that's what generated the appeal. Basically, the fact that I'm looking for information that the city clerk should have already had, ready to go, documented, to be sent out in regards to the situation that happened on July the 25th. That's all, that's it.
And you said, Phil, it was roughly 10 days after the
Roughly, maybe like 13, if you have, yeah, but 25th to August 5th would be 10, and then add 3. Yeah, so give about 13 days, roughly.
One to two weeks.
Any other questions? Okay.
Want me to sit down or stay?
You can sit.
Okay.
City clerk?
Yes. So, thank you. On August 9th, I received the Freedom of Information Act request from Mr. Alexiak via email. The request was dated August 8th and asked for the procedures used by myself to terminate an election inspector. Mr. Alexiak has indicated that I should have had these procedures at fingertip ready, and that was not a necessity. I am aware of my job. I'm aware of what my job requirements are. I did not need to consult the ordinances or the election manual or the procedure manual because I already am aware of my job function. So it's not my responsibility to prepare for some FOIA that may come in and have all of these documents printed and cross-referenced for such a purpose in the event that it may happen. Once I received the FOIA request, I spent approximately 25 minutes reading, reviewing, and extracting the information from a variety of different sources, providing the authority for me to discontinue services with this election worker. I consulted the Personnel Policies Handbook, the Clerk's Procedure Manual, the Clerk's Election Manual, the Clerk's Job Description, Bureau of Elections handout that was provided this year, and the city ordinances. I drafted an email to Mr. Alexiak on August 11th explaining the actions taken in response to his FOIA and the time that was taken, the associated fees, and that this was a supervisory function thus to clarify the cost. He was advised that a payment of $7.06 was required, that the documents were pulled from a variety of sources reviewed would then be released. The fee was calculated by rounding down to the nearest 15 minutes, which is policy and state law. Mr. Alexiak stated that he, at one point stated that in his appeal, the paper that you received, that he didn't believe the documents existed, I believe. So, didn't understand why there was a fee or something to that nature. But if the documents did not exist, then I would have denied the request altogether. So there are documents that are waiting to be picked up. So that's pretty much the whole of it, is that I was aware of my job function at the time of the dismissal. I did not need to dig into manuals until such time as I received the FOIA.
Any questions for the clerk?
Yeah. So, I've been looking through all this stuff, too. It says that you are supposed to have a procedure in place for this, eliminating this person. Do you have a procedure in place? Where does this say?
I'd be interested in knowing where that actually is.
It's in the state rule.
Because the procedure in place is going to be discussed as part of the closed session this evening.
I don't, I don't care about that. All I'm asking
But there is, yes, there is procedure in place.
So you do have a procedure in place?
Yes, but we're talking about the imposition of fees, not
Right.
what the occurrence was related to the dismissal of this person.
Correct, but he's correct in what he's asking. If, okay, so if I have a procedure, and I keep a lot of files, I should be able to go in my file and say, "Procedure for this, pull it out." I think, you know, he's got a valid point there, and say, "Okay, here's my procedure that it says that I have to use to eliminate a person."
The procedure is located, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but between, the procedure draws from several different sources of information, which I referenced. So the procedure isn't one exact source. The procedure comes from the Personnel and Policies Handbook. It comes from the Clerk's Procedure Manual, the Elections Manual, my job description, and information that was provided by the Bureau of Elections related to the authority of clerks over election workers, and also cross-referenced against the city ordinances.
So it sounds like you're using a multitude of things, so you don't really have one specific document that
If you want one specific document, then the one specific document that would come closest to that would probably be the Personnel Policies and Handbook. But in relation to election workers and the responsibility of clerks over election workers and the authority of clerks over election workers, yes, the information that I would have relied on, that I learned during my training, with the exception of the Bureau of Elections handout, which just came out, I believe it was June, I would have relied on information that was provided in my training from these sources. So that's why I had to consult and pull information from multiple sources. And I had to read the Personnel and Policies Handbook to locate the specific sections that related to this authority.
So you did all this after you got rid of the worker or before you got rid of the worker?
I did, while I was trained on what my job was at the beginning. I did not read, I was trained by the retired clerk what my job responsibilities entailed. I did not read all of these things immediately preceding the dismissal of this person. I did not go in search of pulling all of these sources until such time as I received Mr. Alexiak's FOIA, which is why there was a fee related there, too, because it consisted of the time that I expended in reading the Personnel and Policies Handbook and all the other sources that I referenced and cross-referencing with our ordinances. So I could provide him full and complete information.
Okay, so you didn't look at all of our other procedures until after you got rid of the person?
We're not discussing whether or not I got rid of the person and when.
I'm just looking at the procedure. I'm just asking about the procedure.
Yes, but we're not discussing the dismissal of that person. We're discussing
Not either. I'm just
that Phil put in a FOIA
Let me finish.
and there was a fee related there, too, because of what I had to do.
Let me finish. I'm trying to get through of what you're using and what he's asking for and what he's getting charged for, okay? So there really, really was no single point procedure that you used originally or anything. I guess I'm not sure what you used to dismiss the person. So until he asked for this information, you didn't look up all the other procedures until that time?
I was aware of my job.
No, just answer the question, yes or no?
No, I did not need to go consult manuals to be able to dismiss this person. I did not pull this information, as I said, until he requested the FOIA.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, that is your answer.
But I don't always think that that's a wise decision, but that's, that was your decision, so that's all right. I just, I'm trying to make heads or tails out of what he asked for, what you did with procedure-wise. So obviously, there was no procedure to start with.
But there is a procedure. It's a cross
Well, there's a multitude of procedures according to you.
There are several different sources.
Look, we're just on the fee issue here. Look, we'll get to the other issues, but it's very clear in the job description of the city clerk that you all authorized what procedures relate to this issue, and we'll go over those. Right now, it's about the fee.
Any other questions for the city clerk?
I think the narrow question
What's that?
I have a question on that. When you're in the office, don't we take the lowest-paid person that can collect that information?
The lowest-paid person who is qualified to respond to the request. There's no person other than the clerk qualified to address the issue because it's actually in her job description.
Any other questions for the clerk? Okay, so we have, we have to decide if we're going to approve. I just want to reiterate.
You're going to decide whether you're going to affirm the imposition of the fee as set forth by the clerk, reverse the imposition of the fee, or do something different.
Or modify.
Or modify, right.
So there would be time for discussion around.
Right now, yeah.
Yes. So speaking from my own personal experience and job description, when I execute something in my job, I know how to do it. I think when Jake would execute something in his job and knows, you know, the bulk of the Coast Guard rules and regulations, and he knows that this or that is or is not approvable, but yeah, if you need to produce the exact, finite document that that specific piece of universal knowledge, maybe not universal, but universal within your job function, knowledge came from, yeah, it'd take you time. I work on things that have an insane amount of finite design guides, regulations, corporate regs, specifications, everything that, a lot of which I have top of mind, but it would definitely take me a minute to get you every single one that, you know, to list out exactly where I pulled all of this stuff from. I kind of get it the most in that situation. I don't know that, I mean, again, in my personal situation, having I don't know that, I mean, again, in my personal situation, having to, again, knowing what my job function is and what I need to do, absolutely, it's top of mind, it's on the tip of my tongue. I know this design rule, I know that, you know, you need this much clearance to that component, et cetera, et cetera. However, if it were me, you know, if you were like, "Yeah, prove it, yeah, hang on, it's going to take me a couple hours to get, you know, every single finite detailed piece of information that that draws from." It is no slight either way. I understand the person's principle, but again, garnering from my own personal experience, yeah, and especially within a week to two weeks, if somebody, you know, had me, I wrote a report, and then somebody had me, well, you know, "Where exactly did all this information come from?", it would undoubtedly take me personally an additional amount of time.
Agreed.
You agree. True, but I think, in reality, usually you would look at all that stuff before you did anything to make sure nothing changed within those rules. I mean, I was in specifications, I know all about looking at all the detail, and, but things change, rules change, laws change. So, regardless of what you think, at one point, you should always verify your stuff before you make a decision.
I'd like to respond back to that and state that we're talking about a time period that I was hired in and officially became the clerk on March 31st, and we're talking to July 25th. In addition, the laws, the ordinances, and particularly the laws related to elections do come through my email every single day. And obviously, being the clerk, I would be privy to any law changes that, or any ordinance changes that happened here at the commission. So, as far as any of those particular documents having changed in that short period of time, it did not necessitate, in regards to the dismissal of this person, me to go and research all of those sources. And in fact, there was an additional piece of information that was released that I did produce, or that I had prepared for Mr. Alexiak, that was also provided at the time of this person being released, and that was released by the Bureau of Elections in June of 2022. So, that document I did have at fingertip ready, but the remainder of them, I did not, because, again, I had just been trained on my job. So, if there had been changes, I would have been aware.
Yeah, yeah, and we have to watch the precedent, too. I mean, you know, your time is very valuable, and when you constantly are inundated with FOIA requests after FOIA request, most of which you handle within the allotted timeframe and you don't charge. But when you go over and above...
Yeah.
For $7.60, considering what that, what the taxpayers pay for you to, you know, take your time and look up FOIAs, that's nothing.
And if necessary, consult with our city attorney. So, yeah.
I agree. Okay. So, we need a motion?
I've got books that thick, and I sit down with people and find the stuff, and it doesn't take me long to find it when you've done it for a few years. And it's easy to cross-reference stuff, and that's one of the ICC is training, is how to reference stuff fast, get it in, and go to that section and find it.
Well, and honestly, Bill, I definitely appreciate that, and in previous jobs that I've had, yeah, I could say that that would be really easy, but again, I will go back to the fact that I've only been your clerk since March 31st. So, now that I'm more familiar with these manuals and such, then, yeah, in the future, it'll be easier to pull these documents, I'm sure, if it ever comes up again, because, you know, I've had to do it once, but at this point, I had not had to do those documents.
Okay, anyone else? So, I need a motion.
I will make a motion that we continue to impose the fee of $7.60 and strike down the appeal regarding Mr. Alexiak's FOIA request.
Anyone want to second that? Can I second that? Then I second it. Roll call vote, please.
Do we discuss again?
You want to discuss again?
The motion is to, I know you said strike down, it's just to deny the appeal.
Sorry.
Impose the $7.60 and deny the appeal.
The appellant still can challenge that to the court system.
So, the motion is to impose the $7.60 fee.
Correct.
Deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal. Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
So, roll call.
Roll call vote, okay.
What was the motion?
To impose the $7.60 fee and to deny the appeal. And I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkayman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Let's go back to, whoops.
So, we are now at the former 11A, which is now 11B.
All right, 11B.
Yep.
Marine City Police Department Chevy...
No, 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 no.
No.
Former 11A, which is now 11B.
Former 11A, it's now 11B. So, is the election commission representative?
Oh, that's where I was at before, okay. We need to appoint the election commission representative for the November 8th, 2022 general election. Commissioner Callahan volunteered, again. So, can I have a motion to appoint Commissioner Callahan to the election committee for November 8th, 2022 election?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, Marine City Police Department Chevy Tahoe sale bid. I need a motion to approve the sale of the 2018 Chevy Tahoe police vehicle to emergency remarketing for $2,268.18.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
It was the best. Yeah, okay.
And this is round two.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The first round, I had the minimum bid of $45,000. We had no...
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think the age of the vehicle and the shape...
The first round, I had the same guy actually bid on it and wanted to make some of the photo, and by the time we saw the rust on it, and he withdrew his first initial bid, and then said, "If you do it again, let me know." So, we put it at the minimum $2,000, and he was gracious enough to bid that.
Okay. Sure. Got some Michigan on it. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkayman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 015-2022, the adoption of the St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So, I need a motion to approve and adopt Resolution 1015-2022 for the adoption of the St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 015-2022, the St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion, you want to talk about it? I would like you to.
It's a 222-page, if you feel like printing it out. If you feel like printing it out, document. It's on a really neat ArcGIS thing online, if you just Google that, St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's, and pretty easy to navigate, actually. It was very well laid out. I thought it was great.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Commission members. Yeah, this is a beautiful plan. I'm here to talk about St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation. This is kind of a first for our area. It is the first plan that has actually been done virtually for FEMA Region Phi, which includes the five states around the Great Lakes, and it is the second in the nation. So, it's pretty quite novel. We've had some pretty talented folks that have gone through and compiled all this data and all the resources, and made the charts and the graphs and the demographics, and so it's really pretty comprehensive. And the fact that utilizing and adopting this plan then provides the city of Marine City with funding streams, you know, for, we're looking at projects to improve your critical infrastructure, such as water plants, or DPW stuff, or the project that's being done, or will be done shortly in East China, is raising up a sewer lift station, because it's right in that flood zone that's been prone for the past couple of years, and, knock on wood, sorry, got to do that, that we don't have that problem right now. But it's a mitigation project that they've been itching to get done until this plan got happened. So, a lot of pages, and like I said, I will not read every word for it, but the printed version doesn't do it justice. You actually need to go online to look at all the interactive ArcGIS, you know, commentary and charts, and everything that kind of ties into it. So, it's a beautiful project, and I will say, with this being done in this format, it actually went through rather quickly with the state and through FEMA DHS. Soon as the state gave their blessing, it was in FEMA's hands, and in two weeks' time, it was actually approved, which normally takes two to three months. And just because of its formatting, they didn't have to go work for it, they could just click, 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 and just go right through it, so. We're pretty proud of it. A lot of staff hours went into it. We've got some really great people up in metropolitan planning, they put a lot of time into it, our office, a lot of other people went as well. So, at this point, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have.
Will this document enable you, or make it easier for the county to go and seek additional funding streams, like through FEMA, for instance?
With the adoption of this plan, so County Board of Commissioners have already done that, and now it's up to each municipality within St. Clair County to do that. And what that does is, for each municipality that does sign that agreement, or the resolution, if you have projects identified by police, fire, DPW, utilities, whatever, that there is a critical need, or we have a hazard, known hazard, that has happened with our jurisdiction, your jurisdiction, and in order to, you know, save yourself some money, there's a 25% match. So, FEMA pays for 75% of a project. So, that's kind of like free money, is what that's, what's taking place. So, if there is something that rises to the top, and that's up to you as, as the commission with, you know, input from all your department heads, okay, what do we have that is critical? Something that we forecast within the next couple of years that may need attention. That's what this grant does. It provides that funding stream for that project. Hopefully, that answers your question?
It does.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right.
Not a question for you, per se, but in relation to the discussion, can we put the ARC GIS link on our webpage?
Yes.
Hurt, well, again, pending approval.
Pending approval of the resolution, yeah.
Could we?
Yep.
And, yeah, that's all.
Yeah, it is a public domain document, so by all means, once approved, and feel free to edit your website, and, yeah.
Yeah, permission from you, and more importantly, from the people that do our website.
Once all y'all approve it, so.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkayman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to the business regulation ordinance, can I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 22-004 for the revision of the business regulation ordinance, and set the matter for public hearing for the October 20th, 2022 meeting?
I'll make it, oh, frog in my throat. Motion to approve ordinance 22-004, business regulation ordinance revision for first reading, and to set the public hearing for October 20th, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion?
Yes, I got quite a few things. One thing I'd like to ask when we do these revisions to a ordinance, you take the old ordinance, and you mark this ordinance up, line out, add in, highlight, put it all in here, because I had to take this ordinance and go through the old ordinance to try to figure out what changed. And there's eight pages here, so I had to go through all of that to figure out what got updated, and what didn't get updated, and what got left out, and so forth. And that would be better, too, as far as the public, and that's normally how they should be done. They should be marked that way, so that when this goes in, like these minutes, or in these packets, people can actually see what happened to it, what changed, what got added.
You're talking about like the stuff Wade Trim does for ordinances and things like? Have you ever seen any of the stuff that came through the planning commission?
Yeah.
Do you want the red line?
Yeah. They always have like, this is it, and half the time, though, they just like, strike through the entire thing and then write another paragraph.
But that's the way it should be.
But at least you're saying it's on the same page.
Should be red line.
Easy.
Yes, well, that's what this one should be. In the title, you've got 110.001, and it's just 01, that's there, and it's under the chapter on those.
We have 100.
Got an extra zero in there, right in the, right in the title, Section 110.001.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay? And then under chapter, again, it's right there, right before the definitions.
Yep.
So, that needs to be corrected. So, going through this, under a business, you added, "Where a business owner currently holds a tax identification number in their own right or doing business as." That was the only thing I saw that you added there. I wanted to know, I don't know, Mr. Attorney there, we do a lot of himself, herself, are we okay with that language?
Yes, you're okay with that.
All right.
You want alternate pronouns, them, they?
I'm just saying, you know.
You can change it to they, them.
I mean, what would be the best, too?
It's a bouncing ball to follow.
Include openness.
Himself, herself.
And...
You know, you can, well, let me, let me look at that, because we could, I've been using just, you know, any entity, person or otherwise.
Okay, I'm just saying, we have to start fixing some of this stuff.
Yeah, I've read some of your stuff where, you know, it's pretty archaic, but I think if you...
But if we're going to go through the process...
Yeah, I use, I use any entity, person, or otherwise.
Lisa, I just wanted to piggyback off your comment about the having the tax ID number. That was something that we did add into here, because it wasn't in the first one. We want to be clear that anybody that does have a tax ID number within, and is operating a business, they need to register. And that had been kind of a wishy-washy gray area, so to make it fair, we included it into the ordinance.
Okay. Next part is the term and renewal, 110.06, it's on page two. The pages are different between the two, because you guys use a different size, so I'm trying to keep them all straight. So, we used to do the licenses for the budget year, July 1st through June 30th of that year. Now, we're changing to December 31st.
Correct. We're changing...
Changing to January 1st to December 31st.
Calendar.
We're going to change to a calendar year, because the rolling dates in the middle of the year were confusing to businesses. They didn't remember when they needed to renew them, so it was burdensome on the staff to have to send the stuff out as a reminder, where it's, if it's, there's a consistent, you got to renew it by the end of the year, so the first of the year, you're set to go, it would just be easier and cleaner for everyone.
Agreed.
We're trying to make it easier for the businesses, in all honesty. The other ordinance was very convoluted, we really tried to streamline it.
Related to that one, if I could piggyback, so we don't, we don't prorate? I mean, I'm not trying to...
No, we don't.
It's just easier that way.
Yeah, I get it, okay. And then, in terms of a tax ID, I mean, like, I think people who sell crap on eBay, you know, have a tax ID, right?
Yep.
So, this, okay.
You're operating a business. But it, it does specify in here, though, to that, if your business does not have people coming to it... if your business does not have people coming to it, so even if you're in a residential, then you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have to. But if you say you operate, you have a sewing business or you're an accountant in your home, if you have somebody coming into your home, the public coming into your home, then you need to register. You have an LLC and you have patrons coming in your home. But if, yeah, you're selling stuff on eBay and nobody comes in your house and you're sitting in your basement, I don't care.
Right.
We, we can't control that.
No.
We would never know.
Even the sewing business, though.
I, I've gone to people's homes to get wedding dresses altered and formal dresses altered.
I do get.
If your business is inviting the public.
Yeah.
Right, because, and then that's where a lot of the like structures and other stuff comes into play because then you want the person to be safe in this establishment, right?
Exactly.
Correct.
The people coming to the homes.
Email your measurements and ship it.
Right.
Anyway, I just, you know, I don't want to prevent people from doing those types of, you know.
I think we were careful not.
Grassroots businesses.
Not to put them.
Right, right. But it, but there is a cause for concern in people's safety, so in the initial.
That'll get, that'll get. Thank you and sorry for interrupting your train. It was on the same thing at least.
All right. Could you put page numbers too on these? So I'm at 110.15 fee schedule. It says, the city's fee schedule may be amended from time to time, but resolution of the city commission copies of the current fee schedule available upon request during regular business hour in the clerk's office. Can you also put that it's online?
It is.
It is, yeah.
Well, add it though. It doesn't say it's online in here.
Yeah, we can check that.
Okay. So then you got late fees. I noticed that got changed.
Yep.
Let me get to the one that was in here. So now it's just, it used to be 25% of the license fee, first 15 days, blah, blah, blah. There's a whole, another 50%. Anyway, you cut it down to for all licenses which are renewed, 30 days or more late, a $25 fee will be assessed at the time the license is renewed. So you just change it from that to that.
Yep, simplify it.
Simplify.
All right, 19. All right, so section 19. No license shall, licensees shall fail to display legally required tags or stickers conspicuously on each vehicle or mechanical device or machine required to be licensed by this code. What do you, I know we used to have rules for vehicles and that, is that what you're talking about?
Or is this for a sewing machine?
You used to have, the old one had tags or stickers, so I'm assuming it was the old.
Oh, that's state level, that's whatever.
Yeah, this is, when Shannon was looking this up, this had to do more with state requirements, but if it's not necessary, we can even remove it. Like I said, the other one we had had so much stuff in it that really didn't apply to us. We left this one a little bit unknowing, but.
Could we please qualify that as required by state regulations?
State or county.
Does that make sense? Make it make more sense?
Do we even need to do that through state regulations?
I would delete it.
Just delete it?
Yeah, there was another area of it that specifically covered. This does not supersede nor set aside any regulations by the state which you must meet.
That's correct.
I forget exactly where it was.
Because we don't issue any stickers for vehicles.
We can delete that one.
Okay.
All right. So you cut out a whole section, 110.22, the original 110.22, and you've renumbered accumulation of provisions there to that. So why did we cut out special permits to nonprofit enterprise?
Because if they have an LLC and they're operating within the city limits, we're requiring a business permit. So it was, we deleted the entire section because we are not giving anybody an exemption. We, we need to know who's operating, they need to have their inspections, and the fee is truly minimal. Business advertised, it just makes sense, so there's no exemptions.
So then should you have some of that in your, in your definitions?
Like the definition of business under 01?
Well, there's a lot of little things, there's A, B, C, D, there's a whole section there that talks about that with some, I want to know, are we covered?
So you want to add like nonprofit and as a definition?
I don't know that it's necessary though, because we reference in here that anybody that has an LLC is required and they have one, so that encompasses everyone.
Tax ID, yeah.
Yeah, tax ID.
Anybody with a tax ID.
Yeah.
Well, LS, I mean, a nonprofit, nonprofit rather would have a tax exemption number. I mean, churches do anyway.
So Lisa, on this one, we caution legally to, there's a concept in law called use them generous where sometimes when you create a listing, you create a listing that becomes to the exclusion of everything else.
Okay.
So we try to keep this away from being an attempted list that what, what we're trying to include and made it more generic.
All right, I'm just trying to make sure that when you have those type of businesses that they're going to understand the new one.
Where they.
And see, that's why I'm saying why that stuff should be just struck out and, okay, so let's see.
You've got to admit though, you liked when I used Latin, right?
Yeah. So you've got the his, her stuff in the next, under the section 23, you've got it in several paragraphs there you might want to look at.
What was your replacement for that again? Owner or entity?
Any entity, comma, person or otherwise. I'll, I'll help, I'll help fix it.
Anything else?
Yes, I'm not finished yet. We cut out, where else? Okay, we changed 41. We changed 40. All right, you've changed some stuff, adding the building official in one section there. So when, let me ask you this, it's kind of, sort of vague, if, so the building inspector has to go in prior when they get an initial business license? What are you doing, are you doing anything on a renewal?
So the answer to that is not annually. So in looking at the business license ordinance, we're looking at streamlining the entire process a little bit and making it easier. No, we are not going to do an annual inspection. We are going to do one every five years or if there is a change of use to the building.
Does it say that in here?
No.
Well, you might want to do that so that people know in five years that they get hit with that.
But no, we don't want to.
Random.
Yeah, and we don't want to necessarily stick that in there. It's, it'll be the timeline, because what if we, our building official can't get there or we don't have one that year? I don't want to stick to the specific year. We will track things in BSNA that will go to it. There will also be random ones if there's.
Concerns or complaints?
Thank you. A complaint that there's something wrong, there could be a random one that happens. I had conversation with Chief Slankster. The fire chief is going to be doing, he knows that we're changing this, so he is going to be instituting random inspections into all of the businesses beginning, I believe, this year as well. So we're kind of tackling this a little bit differently where businesses need to be expecting of this. And it will make it easier on the, the timing of the hours, the scheduling of the building official to go do this. So on that five-year marker, as we're creeping in, he'll start making the list of who he's going to go make appointments, things like that, so.
All I'm saying is you need to make sure that the business owners are prepared that somebody's going to come in there because currently that doesn't really happen much unless you get a complaint.
Well, I agree, and that, we think that's a problem. That's why we are going to get into a regular routine of doing that, but at the five-year marker, change of years.
Well, and you did send a letter out already.
Yeah.
Yeah, a letter has gone out to the businesses, so they're, they're aware that, you know, random.
Well, they're aware that the business, the timing is changing, but are they aware of all these rules is what I'm saying. And the five-year rule, that's not covered in here, so in five years and somebody comes walking in their business and they're going to go, doesn't say that in the ordinance. You see what I'm saying? I understand what you're saying, but, okay. Because this just says a safety inspection.
Well, Lisa, would it, would it be best for you if we just said that inspection, there's a reservation of rights to conduct an inspection without telegraphing the time period, just the fact that we do have the right to conduct an inspection? And then you don't really know when it's happening, you've just got to be ready at all times.
That's true, but I just think you ought to at least have something so that they don't get blindsided saying, well, it doesn't say it in here. Because I'm telling you, people will go back to this ordinance and they'll look.
Why don't we reserve, why don't we just expressly reserve the right to inspect?
Yeah.
That makes the most sense.
As a business owner, I agree with that.
Because then you could, what if five years turns out to be a bad number, then you could change it on your own.
If you miss it and then they complain, say you missed your five years.
Right, exactly.
Kind of puts the onus on the business owner as well to keep their business in inspection where the order, versus, oh my gosh, here comes my five year, got to get everything fixed and prepared, whereas they've been operating in, you know, not good conditions.
It's like, it's like health department inspections. I mean, you know, I know that.
Those are kind of random.
Anytime.
You can smell them coming.
I can, yeah. Get told.
Well, I'm in a unit that, that does it when, if they, they sell their business, but it's the same name, they're just buying the business that they have to be inspecting.
Change ownership.
Ownership.
If it changes ownership, you're saying if it's an internal transfer where it's the same owner, just changing his name?
No, it's just, the business is the same, just a new owner, somebody else bought it.
No, we would, we still reserve the right to inspect.
Yeah.
Are we adding that under one of these or as an addition?
We'll put it, we'll put it.
That'll sanctify it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it where we think it's.
Anyone else?
I'm not done yet.
Okay.
You removed the temporary business license section, so how do you handle those for like?
I don't even know what we would have done temporary business licenses for, to be honest with you, because if you're a functioning tax ID business in the city, you need to have a full-fledged business license, so we didn't see a necessity for it.
So you just removed that?
Yes.
All right, so the last thing I want to talk about.
Please, let me, let me, is that the old one?
Yeah.
Can I, I just want to see a definition of the old one, please.
While you're looking at that, the fees, so I pull our, our fee schedule. So an initial business license has been bumped up to $200.
First one, yeah, because of all the inspections.
And an annual business now has been bumped up to 75.
Correct.
But you didn't, you didn't revise this because you still have temporary and the peddlers and all that stuff, is that going to come out?
If you, it will in the new one, because remember, we approved that months ago and we're just now looking at this, we didn't know that we were going to remove that then. So yes, it will be revised with the next budget.
Okay, now, on that note, I looked at Elginak and St. Clair. So St. Clair, they only charge $40 for a new business license, let's see, wait a minute. The cost of a business license, $40 for a new license or $20 for an annual renewal. That's all they charge. Then Elginak, so I thought, well, look at another one. Elginak, their license fee is $60, but they go for a two-year period. So I'm kind of wondering why they're doing such a good job keeping the cost down, because I mean, our businesses are hurting too. 200 bucks, you know, all our fees I think are a little on the.
But that's only one time. That's your initial registration is one time of $200. All your renewals after that are 75.
75.
But your first one, you have to have the inspection, so the building official is coming out to do that fee. So you take $75 off of the 200, that remainder is what the city actually gets. $75 we pay out to our building official to go do that. That's why we left the renewal at the $75 because on the year five, when the inspector goes out, the city will make no money that year because we will have to pay him the $75 to go do all of that. In the non-renewal, in the non-inspection years, next month, I'm going to bring you a proposal of what I would like to attempt to do with that money that we are getting in the off years as we're accumulating it. We have a really kind of cool concept that we would like to present to you, which ultimately the money goes back to help the businesses. And it, it's really kind of a cool, it's not, I don't have anything on paper for you. This is, but the concept is that we would have the money here and offer it for the businesses to come and apply for the money from us up to a certain level for reinvestment into a sign or facade fixing up or something like that so that their business licenses are actually going back to help them, their own, almost cyclical.
That's good, that's really cool.
We're trying to help them the way that they help the city by keeping taxes down and having businesses here that people benefit from, but having another avenue for them to come in and.
Right.
We did have one year way back when and it only went to two businesses and then it fell apart.
Well, you have to be able to handle, I mean, you'd have to be able to organize and administer the programs, but it's, it's an opportunity.
You guys, you guys looked around for other, other.
Well, a lot of towns do it, but they do it through their DDAs. Their DDAs offer, you know, those type of grant opportunities for businesses. We don't have one of those, but we are collecting this money and it is going into our general fund. It does go back into the building department, it pays for their supplies, it pays for our contracts with Tracy, it pays for our contracts with Jim to do the work, but in the years we're raising a little extra because we're now not having to pay for the inspections, it's like you, you can't go back and forth and say, okay, one year there's a fee, one year there's not a fee, one you have to track it, two people aren't going to want to pay it the year after they hadn't had to pay it. So you can never go backwards with your fees. You don't have to raise them, but you can't go backwards. So this is just something that we can do to help the businesses in the meantime.
So we charge them 75 the first, well, they get charged 200 bucks first year, 75 the next year, up to the five years, and then you want to re-inspect. All right, so we're paying 75 a year and all they're getting is a piece of paper signed by somebody, so why is it $75? It's just a piece of paper.
Because that's what I'm saying, we can't not collect a fee because you can't.
You'd be more in line with Elginak and St. Clair, I mean, obviously they're doing something.
But I don't know how much they pay their inspectors to go out, maybe their inspectors don't even go out.
Maybe we need to change the whole process of how our inspector does things.
Well, that's another discussion.
Yeah.
This is about, you know, this program, I think we've streamlined it, I think the benefits will help the businesses, they'll understand it better, and after what we bring next month too, I'm hoping that we can turn some of the money around to help them.
And as a business owner, these fees are extremely reasonable, extremely reasonable.
Depends on the business. Some business owners are struggling, sometimes that's a lot of money.
We're pretty much all struggling, but the, for, to have a business license and to have an annual inspection and make sure everybody's doing everything correctly, that's a nominal fee.
Anybody else?
And I just want to make, because I'm looking at the definition of business in here now, so the definition, definition of a business is now, somebody opens a space and puts 50 vendors in there full-time, every one of those vendors, if they have a tax ID, has to have.
If they have a tax ID, yes.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
That is interesting.
We got a lot of businesses in this town, people making some good money and some businesses who don't have business license, aren't paying for business licenses.
Yeah, what about the farmer's market? Or is that because that's on private property, Mr. Attorney?
That doesn't matter.
Well, you can say it doesn't matter.
Well, no, I mean, if somebody who owns a commercial property, that is private property, if that's their business and they're operating it.
Like you said, the eBay person, right?
Right.
Or a sewing person who runs something out of their house.
Right, right. We're never going to know they're there.
Right, they're not zoned to be one.
Right, right.
Well, unless they put a sign out front. Well, unless they put a sign out front and advertise, which some people do. But anyway, can we get this old one for the next meeting updated so that it shows what came in, came out? Thank you.
Yeah, so I could put, I could close my doors, go through the whole inspection process, reopen, and put a bunch of vendors in there, and none of them would have to have a tax ID. And they could function under my license, my business license. Is that what we're saying?
Technically, if they, if the umbrella company was allowing somebody to operate underneath them without a.
The answer is yes.
The tax ID, yes, yeah.
But the onus is on the.
Umbrella company.
Right.
Yes.
To make sure that all their stuff is kosher, all their.
Absolutely.
I mean, they are providing the building, right? You would be providing the building, right, Wendy? So that, you know, from that perspective, that kind of makes sense.
A new business one?
In, in Baltimore, like you're saying, they had big building that split up into a whole bunch of stands. They all have to get business licenses.
Well, I'm going to guess that most of those people probably have choices.
If you don't, if you, they don't have a business license or a tax ID, I mean, how do you know they're there? It's, so it's, this is a tangible thing to say, you have this, it equates to a license. One in the same, I mean, without it, we don't know what they're operating or where they are.
But if they have a tax ID, they have to have a license. If they come in to my new business and they've got a booth, then they have to have a license.
It was his. Bill's microphone.
Anyone else?
I don't need that. It's all twisted.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Just one last thing, this is the first reading, you know, just so everybody knows. It's great that we're discussing it to this degree. So go out, feel out people, see how they like that.
And we'll bring back the changes you ordered.
We'll bring back changes, because I already have public hearing.
Correct.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor for Cayman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Plauston?
No.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Jake Bryson to the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals to fill the vacancy for an engineer or architect.
You're making that motion, you're appointing. You're making that motion, you're appointing as mayor?
I'm making, I'm making the motion.
Said you need.
I thought I said that, I said I make a motion.
No, you said I need.
Support, so we have a motion to support any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving down to the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation Grant Proposal. I need a motion to permit the city manager to move forward with the Ralph C. Wilson, sorry, Ralph C. Wilson Grant Application. Holly, you want to talk about that? I'm sorry, go ahead, we got to do that first.
Well, we need to make a motion to discuss it. I'll make a motion to, yeah, receive the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation Grant Proposal.
Support.
We have a motion to support. Holly, you want to talk about this?
I would love to.
This is exciting.
For starters, I would like to give Michelle in our office full credit for this. She had a wonderful idea. She came to me and asked for permission to submit something off to the foundation to see if it was even viable. And it has escalated to the point where they would like to hear a full pitch from us. And they love the project that we have pitched to them so far. If this is all right with you guys, then we will make a pitch to the entire board, which is really the last step and kind of amazing. Usually, the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation does not deal directly with municipalities. They tend to work through another fiduciary or nonprofit. So this is a big deal. So what we basically did is, the Marina will be ours at the end of 2022 with the final land acquisition. There'll be 13 to 14 slips, but the park is just a grassy knoll at this point. Phase two of the park is your parking lot, your ADA bathrooms, all your sidewalks, your pavilion, your drinking fountains, your bike racks, you name it. It's phase two to make it everything that people would want it to be. And it's also a lot of money that we don't necessarily have right now. So Michelle put this together with the pitch for the entire phase two of the Marina project. It would complete that from head to toe with everything we need in it. When we made the pitch, they also said that we should add a little something else to it, which was kind of amazing as well.
They suggested that?
Yes.
That's amazing.
So they are also aware, this gets a little confusing, because this ties together with our Bridge to Bay Bike Trail. The Bridge to Bay Bike Trail Downtown Marine City Loop will come down and around and touch this park as it goes over the Bell River Bridge. So we're kind of looking at it as a potential trailhead, per se, and renaming that entire area the Marine City Marina District, because we have our ADA compliant kayak launch on one side, our Marina on the other, and now this bike path, that's a county-driven initiative, all touching base right in this one spot. So we have included into the Ralph C. Wilson Grant Proposal the matching funds that we would need to get the TAP grant through MDOT, the one that PCE's been working on for us. The matching grants are, the matching dollars are built into this. So if you give us permission to go for this grant, which costs us nothing, there are no matching funds to go for this Wilson Foundation. It will pay for our entire phase two of the Marina, and it will give us the matching dollars that we need to go forward with the TAP grant to complete our bike path. This is free money. Everything right here is free money. And it completes two major initiatives. One being the Marina, that's been in your master plan for decades. And a bike path that's been county-driven and well-received in this community for years. It's just been getting it going and the phase is happening. Marine City's phase is now. We've been meeting with the Bridge to Bay Trail Group regularly. They, which is next in the agenda, the approval of that route, they love it. And it all ties together to just show some serious progress. It allows for the residents of Marine City and tourists of Marine City to really explore and be a part of and see Marine City in another very creative, outdoorsy way. And it steps from everything. So that's what this is. It's $400,000, that is no matching grants from the city to go after this. It almost seems too good to be true, but it's really not.
On page two, it says requesting 30% matching funds. Is that calculated later by virtue of another grant that would fund that, or?
So that right there is the bridge debate engineering costs that we're, that's the matching funds that we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's what we'll talk about in 11G.
Right, so this is what we built in to get us to the $400,000. So if we, if we do the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation Grant, we did 30% matching. 30% matching, when you deal with a TAP grant, which is the next issue, there's points for how much matching dollars you have.
Right.
State requires some points for it, some cog does not. But it helps to have a little more. Well, we had wiggle room to get us to the even $400,000 mark on this one, so we bumped it to a 30% match, which will give us more points for the TAP grant. So that's what that number is. That's your matching funds.
What amazes me is that the Wilson Foundation sees such potential in our area and in Marine City, that they literally advised you, instead of going here with your ask, right? They, they said to you, we need you, we would like you to go here.
Make this bigger.
Make it bigger.
They don't normally dialogue.
They do not normally do that.
We, no, they don't. And we met with, they've been helping us, I mean, I'll be honest with you. They've been working with the county on the Bridge to Bay Trail. So they're a huge proponent of the bike trail anyway. So with this Marina tying into it and essentially becoming a trailhead where the bikers can stop, use the restroom, use the pavilion, sit by the river, you know, have their lunch. It, it was a, it was like a perfect fit, really, when we made the pitch to them. They're excited about it.
Yeah. That's great.
Question on this, though, all right. So we haven't really created any plans yet. I mean, we had a preliminary little hand-drawn thing on this whole park. My concern is going to be this restroom facility at $98,000. I mean, we've already got major problems. We have a beautiful bathroom downtown, but, you know, this gets destroyed, it gets plugged up, it gets vandalized. And then in the winter, you're going to have to put a Portageon or something there anyway, because that's what we've had to do down there, so that it keeps people from using the outside of the building as a toilet. So my concern is this is going to be another facility here, this particular portion. I don't have a trouble with the pavilion and some of the other stuff. But I'm concerned on this restroom, that we're going to get into this again, even though that one's beautiful, but it's been a lot of problems. And that's, that's the only thing that I worry about, is that you build it, and then that's, we're going to be paying up the nose every time we have to clean it out or fix the destruction or whoever's stuffing stuff down in them.
I don't deny that, you know, the DPW is tasked with cleaning up after people who don't treat other people's things very nicely. However, we would be remiss if we did not put a bathroom facility in this park. You already heard a gentleman say, there's another park in town where the kids are running home to use the bathroom. Unfortunately, it's. So it's, it's, it's one of those things, it is a negative that we have to do, but as property owners, I think we have a responsibility to the tourists and the residents that go to that park, that they have a restroom. Otherwise, you're going to have them running downtown asking to use a business, and that'll create another problem.
What I'm saying is that we utilize the Portageons, because it's cheaper, easier, cleaner. They come in, they clean it out, they take care of them, they put them up. You could put a nice thing where you could put them in there.
The only thing is that, though, with Lisa, and we've, we've talked about a few different things. This is right in the neighborhood of, it's right on the border to a residential. This needs to look nice. People are going to see this from their homes.
Well, you can make them look nice, St. Clair's got one right in the middle of their park.
They make some very easy precast bathrooms that look very nice, that are easy for DPW to go in, power wash down, close up for the winter, however they want to handle it. They're, you know, they're the professionals, but we can't not do a bathroom.
And this is on Main, too. It's on, it's, you know, when you start going. It's that whole intersection, you know? And there's nothing that says that in the future, we can't get some cameras in our parks, right?
Well, that'll be another discussion, is cameras. Yes. So it's a very.
It's license plates only.
The both. So this is a really exciting opportunity for us. We're basically tonight, I'm asking for your blessing to go forward with making the pitch to Wilson and hopefully getting this money.
Okay, anyone else?
Noted on the bathrooms, though. Let's definitely focus on a more robust, because I've been in the ones at Mariner Park, and it's, they're like perfectly good residential stuff. But it was kind of residential fixtures and everything else used, you know, not the like totally bulletproof, you know? Hit it, you can like hit it with your elbow as hard as you. Well, please, you know, we need the, yeah. There, those things exist for a reason, you know? Humanity is humanity. We are what we are, we're imperfect. That stuff's going to happen, so.
By the prison faucets.
Yes.
There you go.
Hide everything in the walls, so that you can't break it off.
Not going there. Fully noted, I guess is my point, and I think we should try and strive for something that would have longevity, be easier for you to clean, yet still look nice and.
It's available.
The thing with the Portageons is they do smell a little bit. I mean, they off-gas a little bit of odor.
Not attractive.
Anyone else?
So you've got, you've got, we're just doing the Marina portion, though, in this, correct?
This, no.
Because we can't talk about this, you're going to approve this before we can even talk about this?
You're approving this to ask for $400,000.
Yeah, but before we even talk about that, though.
For the, it's the matching funds for that. Well, how do you want me to do it? I have, it's, it's all, I told you, this is a domino, these are tied together.
I've got three other motions.
They are tied together, but I've got a lot of concerns on this one, too.
Well, and there's more, in the second one, when we talk about the bike, you'll see that there's other motions as a contingency plan to this. But first and foremost, I mean, we need permission to go for this.
Well, that's fine, but I don't want to give permission for that if some of this is in there that's, you know, maybe an issue. That's, that's all I'm saying, it's kind of hard to.
Could I make my motion that we discuss both, at least discuss both together? So that, so that it could be discussed together?
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I'm fine breaking them out if that's what's needed, happy to do it. But just so that we could discuss both together, because entities, you know, this whole section is this, right? Or, Richard Bay, so anyway, I'd like to amend my motion to additionally discuss 11G.
So now we're doing with that 11G.
It's now 11H.
It's 11H.
Uh, what, sorry. Formally 11G, now 11H. Bill, you had supported previously, do you re-support her?
Yeah, it's already discussed, yeah.
So regarding the bike path, and I guess, go ahead, Lisa, if you had stuff.
Well, so we're doing, wait a second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a question. So we're doing this Ralph C. Wilson Grant Application, and we're going to talk about the bike path proposal?
At least in order to discuss.
Because they're related.
Okay.
You're going to end up handling each on a separate floor.
Well, that's what I was going to do in the first place, okay, thank you.
But we couldn't talk, we had to vote on one before the other.
To be able to discuss both.
So, so the bike path has been up for discussion since I got here last year, probably before. So you guys voted a while back. The St. Clair County Community Foundation gave the city $10,000, five to work on the preliminary bike path plan, which is now in front of you, and five to go after the TAP grant, which is them filling out the application and sending it into MDOT. So we finalized the route, which I will explain to you. This has been vetted through, I mean, Mike and myself sit down with the community, not community foundations, the Bike Trail Board and through PCE, and it has been vetted as really the ideal route and the safest way to do it. And so this is the path we would like you to approve. And with that, the other parts to it would be, you would also be approving the ability to spend the other $5,000 of the community foundation's money for PCE to apply to MDOT for the TAP grant. The TAP grant requires a matching fund. That is a minimum of 20%. If we didn't get the Wilson Foundation money, we would be asking you to use 20%, which is the $60,000 of ARPA funds as our matching to go forward with the TAP grant. The TAP grant would pay the remainder of the $293,000 to finalize this route. So this is a county initiative that they're trying, Marine City's phase is now. They've come down from Port Huron, Marysville, St. Clair, it's Marine City's turn. This route, coming in from the north, has you coming down, what is that, Frederick? Frederick. Frederick is going to be proposed, if you look at your map, they are in color, that section is a shared bike lane, which means it is on the road with the vehicles. There's just signage to let you know that it's shared. It's, there's only parking on one side through there, so it can safely, the bike lane can safely happen.
That's a continuation of water as it goes towards the beach, right?
Yes, we wanted to make sure that we utilize our assets. We were sending people up to the beach, yes.
It's Fairbanks, and then it's Broadway.
No, no, this is, this is this little, this little.
It goes to the beach, yes.
Oh, yeah, that.
Little tail. It's like the continuation of water north.
We just wanted people to be able to go to the beach.
And you guys do know that the bike path runs right along here? I don't know why they didn't put that on there.
So the bike path is out kind of in the no-man's league.
Yeah, it's actually.
So the bike path is out kind of in the no man's land, where at the end of the red and the end of the green.
I'm just saying, it's, it's out there, okay.
Yes, they, PCE didn't put it on here, but at the end of the red and at the end of the green meets the current bike path that's out here. So we, I've had some conversations with MDOT. MDOT has some future plans for Parker, so-
Okay.
They'll be coming to us to talk about things down the road, but with what they, with the, the work that they need to do out here, it's gonna make the concept of an actual bike lane on Broadway, coming over the bridge, heading to town, possible. So that is a more ideal situation, because it, there is a lot of narrowness in there, we didn't, it's a little scary to have bikes sharing with cars in that area. So with their potential work in 2024, would make this possible in that section, that's why it's labeled in blue. And then really, as you go through town, everything else is a shared bike lane through town, because a lot of our roads through that section just do not offer the ability to make a separate bike lane, there's just no way to do it. You'll come down to the south, and then you'll head, you'll head across on Bridge, and then you'll stop at our wonderful new Marina Park, and you'll cross down. You'll notice that there's some red right there as you come over the, the bridge at Bell River. We're adding a shared path there, so that we can capture people up to our kayak launch. We're trying to link everything, we want people to have complete accessibility. So that'll be a shared bike lane, so people can cut up.
Before the new bridge was made, that was actually a road, so, but it would be sidewalk, lane adjacent?
To the bike, to, I think they probably ripped the sidewalk out.
There is one.
Were they ripping the sidewalk out?
Sure.
Yeah, so they're ripping it out and do a big bike lane.
That railing is getting bad right there anyways.
Yeah, so it'll connect it. And then the other section is, over by the school, the other small red area is, because it's so busy over there, especially when the kids are getting out of school, don't want to share bikes with the cars at that point, that juncture needs to be a separate bike lane, keeping the kids off the street. That'll connect to the back of the bike lane. And then everything else is shared, comes down, it's pretty simple, pretty safe, it encompasses a lot of town, and then of course, you know, you have your sidewalks and everything on, on Parker that come up. I mean, I think it's, it's a very, PCE worked really, they worked quite a bit on it, Mike sat down and went through it with a fine tooth comb, too, as far as, you know, where manholes were, and trees that couldn't be moved, and everything, I mean, we were pretty thorough.
This has been a long time coming. I remember going to a meeting before I was even a commissioner, five years ago, about something like this. It's like, good grief, I'm glad we're moving forward on it.
And truly, we cut the costs significantly, because so much of it is shared bike lane, you're using existing road. So we cut the costs significantly from what it was originally, because there's just so many sections that we legitimately can't do.
And you know what I've noticed, too? I think our bike traffic is up, because of the, because of the cost of, you know, gas and everything, I mean, I'm seeing more people walking and on bikes, yes.
Yep.
For sure. I just went down through Marysville, you mentioned that they must have done something, they did theirs recently, and I rode up, and if you take River off of M29, it's a nice ride down, unfortunately, we had a headwind, but, yeah, they had that, that charo's thing where it's, it's just a lane, but it kinda says like, hey, you know?
Bikes only.
This is where, no, it's not a bikes only.
But, but it makes it clear, you're, you're on the bike, you're on the bike path.
Right. And there was no white line, it just shows these kinda like, yeah, there are ones where it's a whole specific conventional bike lane, that's the blue. But anyway, it was nice at least, and thankfully, it was a fairly untrafficked road, which I would agree to a, to a degree, water and Main generally are. The only thing that I'm disappointed in, and because I feel like that whole side of town, along Parker, between kind of Fairbanks and, you know, Chartier, it's not very walk- I mean, it's sorta walkable, but not if you want to cross that street. And that's where I was really hoping to see the road diet, like what was done in St. Clair, and something, you know, abundant crosswalks of-
Well, I think, to be honest with you-
My own kid comes out of school.
I think MDOT is gonna address some of that next year. I think there's some concern about that section of Parker, so be ready for that conversation next year.
Let me, let me bring you something up on that, okay? So, the safe routes to schools, that was a four hundred and some odd thousand dollar grant, right? Big bust, because the question was asked, they put in electronics, the signs, solar, they put them there so the kids could cross and all that, so the question was, nobody knew what to do, when somebody hits that button, that thing is flashing like this, what's the guy in the car supposed to do? Stop, do, you know, whatever. The question was asked to the state, the state goes, hmm, nobody ever asked us that, therefore, we don't know the answer, so we'll have to go check it out, so they came through and they took out all the buttons and all the stuff off of every one of their signs on their highway, not on our side street.
Right, right.
Because they didn't want to get nailed for anything. And to this day, they still don't have them. And then the one fell down over here by the Lions Club, never been replaced, so there's another one, because the kids do cross there. So the whole safe routes to school, they did this whole plan, and this is what, kids don't, I mean, they use a portion of it, but the bulk of it, nobody uses. Now, as a bike rider, and I ride all summer long, this thing is two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
Should've seen the first one, it was ridiculous.
To me, this is still ridiculous.
I-
I mean, we're, we're putting, we're putting, oh, so I, I started going, that's why I wanted to talk about this one separately. I mean, here's the thing, remove, oh, let's see, where's the one, I gotta try to get these. Piece of paper, so this eye chart here. Remove striping, twenty thousand dollars to remove striping. Really? I mean, come on.
Lisa, I'm, I'm not gonna deny that-
How much is it to paint striping?
These are-
Probably double.
I'm not gonna deny that when you look at line item by line item, this kind of stuff is crazy expensive, but this is what the engineers are charging.
Well, it might be what they're charging, okay, so as a bike person, I-
But that's why we go get grant money for this, we don't pull this out of our own pocket.
Grant money is still taxpayer dollars, so I know you, I, I know what you're saying, Holly, that, that it's free money, it's not free money, it's taxpayer money, one way or another, that's coming back to them, and they know it here. So all I'm saying is, I take this route almost every day with my bike, and I, and I, one thing is, I watch myself going through town, because of all the people whipping their doors open. Some areas, I just ride on the sidewalks, because it's safer, because of people and they're texting, and they're swerving over, and they're doing this and that, but, and I'm all for, because like I said, I ride every day, but I, I can't see two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to do this. I mean, so what are they gonna do with the, the blue section? How are they gonna fix the bridge? Because that's narrow now.
That's, that's gonna be on MDOT, we're being able to-
Unless they do the whole bridge, there's no way to fix it.
Well, and that is under discussion.
And, and I'll tell you, you try to do a, you try to do a road diet through here, and people are just gonna be livid, because that road diet in St. Clair is horrible. Every time that bridge is closed, it is.
I disagree.
No, it's not.
The majority of people actually really like the road diet, the people that don't like the road diet are the people who are trying to get through town and not stop. It's very conducive to business owners, it's safety, it actually, the only reason St. Clair's is different is because there's a bridge that opens every half hour in the second.
Well, here's the other problem, you know their bike lanes?
It helps the businesses, and it's a much safer route.
They put in the bike lanes along through there, and you know what they're used for? The guys doing the lawn, or parking their trucks in them, and then when you get down into town, when you're sitting there waiting to try to get through a mile long thing, because you're waiting, and you got the lane to cut over, because you wanna turn right down there, they're all cutting into the bike lane way before the turn lane, and so people are driving through this, and they're not even paying attention to these bike lanes.
Are you talking about St. Clair, here in Marine City?
In St. Clair.
Well, we're talking about Marine City.
Well, I understand that, you're talking road diet, you're talking all this stuff, and St. Clair's already done it, and what I'm saying is, St. Clair's done it, and it really hasn't worked to the benefit of some people. A lot of people I know now bypass the entire town, because they don't want to deal with it anymore, so.
Actually, can I say that I drive St. Clair two times a day, every single day that I come down here, and I have hit that bridge a total of one time all summer, and-
I hit it all the time in a backup, I don't know what to tell you.
It slows people down going through there, like, they don't speed through there, and they also have crosswalks.
I mean, when they first did it, it was, it was-
People had to get used to it.
Yeah.
But we don't have the bridge, we don't have the bridge here, so. But anyway, this is not about a road diet, this is about this.
But you don't have room downtown to put bikes, and cars, and people, people, you're complaining now about ADA from residents that are calling me about ADA, you say we're ADA compliant.
We don't have any ADA issues.
You, you open the door, and you got no room.
That's not asset.
Or anything.
We have one-
You go out the street, and you gotta watch, you gotta do two miles an hour downtown, because they're opening their doors into the traffic pattern, and you're gonna put another thing down there? That's unsafe, and I'm telling you, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Yeah, thank you.
It, it's just too costly, I just, I, I, I don't see how they can charge you two hundred and ninety-three dollars just to make a, a bike path, I mean.
This, the, when I met with the bike, the, the bike committee, too, they were actually thrilled at this, the, the budget at the county level that they had been discussing for Marine City's route was nearing the million dollar mark. So the fact that we are down at, you know, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, which yes, it is a lot of money, but that's why I'm not coming to you, asking you to pull this out of your general fund. I'm asking if the Wilson Foundation doesn't pass for sixty thousand dollars of ARPA funds to go after that, and turn sixty thousand dollars into nearly three hundred thousand dollars of a benefit to this community.
Right.
This is signage, it's, it's wayfair signage, it's, it is removing of trees, it's moving, you know, there's a lot that goes into this. It's not cheap, I get it, but it is an asset to the city, and I think that it will, it'll continue to connect Marine City to the rest of the county. Everybody's doing this, they're all connecting, we are, we're, we're the break in the map.
No, we're not, Caterhill's the break in the map, Caterhill hasn't completed it.
But they, but that'll be their, their next, they're the next state.
Well, that's fine, but this is, people ride their bikes now.
What's nice, too, is that the Ralph Wilson, like I said before, I mean, I'm, you know, this is a very positive thing, and why we keep putting these negative spins on everything positive for Marine City amazes me. So the fact that the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation basically said to you, I think that you should go for a bigger ask, that's, that's kind of an indicator right there.
It is.
Right, that's an indicator right there. So, so we've got a motion, and-
Well, I want to make one more comment.
Go right ahead.
You talk about all this stuff, and how great this is, and the problem is, is, okay, some of this is nice, and some of it is just way too much money, and you still, and I know we're doing four roads, but we've got a hell of a long way to go, and yet, we're still using, gonna use that ARPA money, not for roads, and not for either our police department or some other thing that we might need, we're gonna do a two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar bike path, and I'm just telling you, people ride these right now, I ride it, I, I don't need a bike path, tell me where you go, and there's also already a pathway-
But you live here, that's different.
Wait, it's a state, they, there's a state signs that are already all along most of this route, if you, if you look, there's bike signs already there, and I don't know why, even if I didn't live here, if I go to another town, with Google Maps and all the technology we all have on our phone, that we all carry all the time, I don't need to have to not know where everything is, or somebody to follow a bike path, I can look it up on my phone and go where I want to go, if I'm on a bike, or I'm walking, or whatever I'm doing. But I just think that people are gonna look at this, this one, I can kinda go for, but this one, two hundred and ninety-three thousand to stripe and put some stuff in, like I said, we went through this with that safe routes to schools, and it was basically a bust. It really was, and that was over four hundred thousand dollars.
Two different things.
No, it's basically the same type of thing.
So, my opinion, the fact that that failed is terrible, it's crap, and, I mean, in St. Clair, right along the crosswalks, they've got, pedestrians have right of way, state law, so I'm really impressed that the state would just actually come and take everything out, I mean, that seems really weird. I'm not either here nor there on that, I think that's total BS, if that's what the state came and did.
They sent us a letter, there's one in the old packets, you can pull the letter, because we expected them to eventually come up with a solution and come back.
No, there shouldn't be-
Never heard from them again.
But a road diet would make that area so much more walkable and so much safer, so you've got places like McComb Orchard Trail, these are like destinations for cyclists, they love this stuff.
Why do you think-
They feed off of it, and if we are a destination for cycling that's gonna bring people to town and help our businesses, and again, particularly along Parker, I would love to see that, because I think they're very left out.
Why, why do you think it's bad along Parker? I mean, I ride that all the time.
Not in the road.
Yeah.
You ride on the sidewalk.
You're on the sidewalk.
Which you're not supposed to do.
I see other people riding the road, but-
I, yeah, no, I-
Not supposed to ride on the sidewalk.
It's a road race on Parker.
The kids all ride on the sidewalk, because it's safer, it's safer the way people drive nowadays, that's why people don't want to ride on the road.
Here, you go downtown, you're riding your bike, and you want to stop, and get an ice cream or something, where are you gonna put your bike?
On a bike rack that this funding would pay for.
Where are you gonna put the bike rack? On the sidewalk?
On an easement somewhere.
Where downtown?
I mean, that's what this stuff would figure out, okay, so the other thing, too, there's grant money, okay, is there for the taking. It's there.
If it's not, it's someone else.
Whether you like it as a tax expenditure or not, it's there. If you don't take it, which this city has historically done, decade after decade, on federal aid, road funding, we could've had tons of stuff done if people had, you know, gone to meetings.
Why isn't anybody doing the road funding?
We have somebody going to Scott's meetings right now.
Because there's none for us to grab right now, that's why we're talking about this, this is the type of stuff that they're funding right now, is outdoor activity type things.
So we have an opportunity at this.
It's all feel-good stuff, just like I said, the safe routes to school was a feel-good thing, we thought it was gonna be good.
That's not our choice, that's available.
We put it all in, and I'm telling you, this bike path's gonna end up the same way.
I feel we should go after the state, if that was their screw up, and I'm all for doing something like that. If somebody held us to something, and we implemented it per their directive, and then they screwed it up, I'm happy to write a letter to the state, if you send me those meeting minutes, I'd be the first one to do it. But all the examples in these other towns are really great, and it's a really healthy thing to have cycle traffic, and just safer, slower, single file vehicular traffic.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see-
So you have a motion on-
I don't see that Parker's at, used to be very heavy traffic on Parker. I cross this every day with my bike to get over to the bike path. Sometimes there's no cars there, so I guess I, I don't, and I live right by it, so I see it every day, so this whole thing that it's, oh, it's so fat, it's not there anymore. It used to be, but it's not there anymore, I'm telling you.
Coming out of school, it's mayhem.
Well, that's only when the kids are getting out.
The other day, I tried to make a left out of the city offices, and I had a really hard time, so. So we have a motion on the table, can we please get back to this?
So the first motion-
We have to break these up now.
Break it up and down.
The first motion is just to allow the staff to pursue the presentation on the Wilson, which costs nothing, and there are no matching funds to get potentially four hundred thousand.
Correct.
In that four hundred thousand would be enough for your matching funds to get the bike project.
So it would not, we wouldn't even have to use our ARPA fund. If we get the Wilson Foundation funds, it's all there, we can, we don't even need that.
Okay, so, so that's the first motion, because I have these all broken down, right? So, so that's the first, and we already have a, a first and a second by Ross and Clausen, do you got that?
I have that, it seems like they had-
I did amend it later.
Do it just for discretionary purposes, so I think it'd be prudent for the first and the second. and the second.
All right. I'll make another.
To go after the Ralph C. Wilson, to.
Well, you gotta decide the current motion.
Yeah, I think he's reduced.
Do we have to strike down? Well, if I amend my motion, yet again.
Strike down your first motion and make a new motion.
Strike my first motion, but does that take it out of the minutes?
No.
Okay.
It'll still be in the minute.
Okay. Because I want, you know, all this discussion to be in there.
It will be.
All right. I strike my first motion to replace it with accepting the Marine City Marina District Initiative as presented to go after the money for the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation as presented in item, former item 11F, now item 11G.
I thought we were doing, I thought it was for the.
We have a motion.
To allow them to go to do a presentation. Isn't that what you just said?
That's what it is.
That's what it is.
That's what's going on.
If they accept us with the presentation, then we're in.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So now are we doing the bike path one?
And now we're going to, I need a motion to approve the bike path proposal, correct, as identified on the map provided. And this was the, yes, that was it.
Yeah, this one's to accept the route.
The route, right. Bike path proposal as identified on the map provided. Okay. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary bike path route as presented.
We have a motion and support. We've already discussed. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Claussen?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes, with the caveat that I'd like to see more effort put towards making Parker more accessible in the future. I mean, not that it would need to be done here, but you know what I'm saying, like that.
In the future.
As was promised, right, that a future look would be taken at this. But otherwise, I do accept this as presented.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Now I need an approval for the expenditure of $5,000 to be, to be reimbursed from the St. Clair County Community Foundation grant for PCE to apply for the TAP grant on behalf of the city.
So they had already given us that money.
Support.
I know you're looking at me, Brian.
Okay.
But you're telling me I can spend it somehow.
So.
I gotcha, I gotcha.
Bill's first.
So I got Jake Bryson and Claussen.
Jake made the motion. Claussen supported.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Motion carried.
And continuing on, a motion to approve a contingency plan. Did we talk about this for this?
Yeah, that would be the ARPA fund.
Okay, all right.
If we don't get the Wilsons.
All right. Contingency plan for the city to commit to the 20% grant match using ARPA funds in the amount of $60,000 in the event that the city is not awarded the necessary grant funds through the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation.
And before we move forward on that, I have one question because in the previous documents, you had mentioned a 30% grant match. Is it a 30 or is it a 20?
If we're using our own ARPA, we're only gonna do 20.
Okay.
If we're using Wilson's Foundation, we're using 30.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
So the 60 is 20%.
Yes.
We need a motion and a second.
Yep, I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I know.
What is here?
Yep.
What is it here?
Right here.
That we approve a contingency plan for the city to commit a 20% grant match using ARPA funds in the amount of $60,000 in the event that the city is not awarded grant funding through the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation.
Support for the sake of discussion. We have a motion and support. Discussion?
Yes.
So, do, is this something that we have to do now, or can we wait to see what happens after the grant comes?
It's all hinged because the TAP grant for us to meet the same funding cycle as MDOT for the Broadway concept, to have the shared, we need to hit this grant cycle, which means PCE has to do and have the application in in October, next month. So, no, there is no time. It's all, they're all hinging on each other to be able to do.
And how much ARPA funds?
We would only be using $60,000 of our 472,000, which is 20%. We lowered what we would be using of our own to a 20% match from this, and it'd be the ARPA funds.
Do we know when the Ralph C. Wilson money, that grant will be decided? Have any idea?
Reading between the lines, they basically said that we should know in the next couple months by the end of the year, and if we got it, then we would be awarded it next year.
So the question is, is if we have to put the application in for the TAP grant now, how do we pick the 20 or 30% level?
So, we are, we spoke to MDOT and the TAP grant representatives, and we build that into our application for the TAP grant. They understand that we have a, you know, scenario one and a scenario two, and do not have to prove where the matching funds are coming from in the initial application to the TAP. So we're fine with that.
All right, so we don't have to attach a $60,000 check to the.
No. Oh, God, no. Oh, God. This is normal. This is normal behavior for somebody to look elsewhere for another grant for matching funds for these. So our TAP grant representative said this is not new to them, this concept.
So is it the 293, 641 that we're taking the 20% from?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Which is 58,728.2.
58. We rounded. We rounded.
I just wanted to make sure I knew exactly where.
Yep.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
Good.
Bob is like trying to, no, no, it's from here. Anyway, we got it.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes. I really hope the Wilson Foundation grant goes through.
Everybody knows.
Mayor McCammon?
Mayor.
Sure.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now I need a motion to approve the draft of purchasing ordinance to the.
Well, this.
We just did that.
Nope.
No, no.
For discretionary purpose.
It's just for discussion.
So this is for discussion. The, your charter.
Do we need a motion to discuss it?
Let me do a presentation first. Your charter at section 13.1 says with respect to purchasing, selling, and contracting procedures, you're supposed to have an ordinance in place. My review indicates I could not find an ordinance in place. We've had lots of meetings where purchasing, waiving competitive bidding, what is competitive bidding, what is professional services, what are the rules, and so I drafted for your review an ordinance that would be consistent with your current charter. Sent it out a long time ago as a draft, asking for comments. I haven't received any comments. It's not up for action this evening in terms of first reading or second reading or any reading. It's just for you to understand why we're doing this. We're doing it because you're supposed to do it. It's supposed to be in place. It's not in place. I want you to have it in place. I don't want a purchasing ordinance that deviates from your charter. I don't want inconsistency. So I drafted this to be consistent with your charter, and I'm asking that you take a look at it, get comments into myself or the clerk or the city manager, and then we would bring back a draft for a first reading at the October meeting.
Were you proud that I had a couple comments in?
Well, you did.
You didn't seem.
Um, I can't read that. Or, yeah, or single, such competitive, or single source. Yeah, I see that. That's a good comment. Anyways, I, what I tried to do was every section that I put in here, I gave you the reference to your own charter so that, so that you would be able to make easy reference.
This clearly is not a strike-through situation.
It's not, it's not a strike. Yeah, I'm just letting you know, like, the first, who is the purchasing, purchasing agent? If you go to your charter, it tells you who that is. The bidding process, it tells you what you're supposed to do. And all you have to do is refer to your charter, and you'll see that the provisions of this draft ordinance are consistent. So like I said, no action is required this evening. I'm just asking for your comments.
I'll send you some.
What's that?
I'll send you some.
If you want them via email, should we make a motion to receive and file so that we can discuss?
Just motion, motion to receive and file.
All right, I make a motion to receive and file the draft, purchasing, selling, and contracting procedures for the letting and making of contracts provided by the city attorney.
Support.
We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Do you want any of our comments now or just email them?
Just email them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Typical left going on, which you can see from the report. Again, I want to credit Michelle for her efforts on working on so many different grants right now. She really is amazing at it, and I think we've been missing the boat by not capitalizing on her talent. So I just wanna give her an extra shout-out for taking that initiative, and I enjoy working with her on them. I also would like to give another kind of welcome to our new treasurer, Nicole. She is wonderful. She is busting her butt every day. She's staying late. She's taking stuff home. She's coming on the weekends, which I try to tell her not to do. But she is trying to grasp everything and learn it as quick as she can because we will have UHY out of here by October 1. So we will have, yes, I know, yes. So, but she is wonderful. So if you have questions, please reach out to her. She's very knowledgeable. She's just learning our internal systems for things. So that's exciting. I'd also like to thank UHY, to be honest with you. They have been incredible, absolutely incredible. When we reached out for help last year, they came to our aid. We've had some bumps in the road, for sure, but who wouldn't? Coming into what they came into and from scratch, literally having to pick up everything from payroll to billing and everything in between. And they did a phenomenal job keeping us afloat and fitting in with us and working well with us and being accessible. So I am grateful that they did come to our aid. Very positive things happening in the town, and I think it's important that we keep that narrative going. Marinas, bike paths, revitalization of old buildings, upgrades to our parks. Mike's guys are out there fixing and pruning and picking and cleaning constantly, and everything really looks nice. The blight has been getting cleaned up. Homes that haven't been mowing their lawn or painting their shutters, they are. I just think, when I drive through town right now, yes, we have our few bad eggs, which we're still continuing to work on, but things just look nice, and I think it's a nice place to be. I'm constantly hearing my friends, my family, people from out of town, they're coming into town to go to our restaurants, to walk around, ride their bike, whatever, go to the beach. And it's just, it's cool to hear. The county's talking about us at their meetings, at their blue meets green meetings, and thinks about the progress that's happening here, how good it's been to work with everybody down here. These are all really good things, and I think that the public should be aware that their town is getting good press right now, and they should be excited about it. And so we gotta keep driving that. You know, if you know somebody who's got a business, tell them to bring it to Marine City. And if somebody's looking to expand, tell them to bring it to Marine City. We have space for them. We want them. I will say that is one thing that we do need to work on, is driving some more businesses in town. We do have our fair share of vacant buildings right now. Let's try to fill them. So keep that in mind when you're talking to business owners. And talk about all the positive things that are happening. There's a very long list of them. So, the other thing is, you know, with this concept of the bike path, I do want the public to know what it is and where, you know, we're looking at it to be. Come, ask questions if you have comments about the bike path or the future of what it's gonna look like or could be and how it ties with everything. Please come talk to me about it. I'd love to hear your thoughts, ideas, things like that. So, that's my report for tonight.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yep. Um, so.
Brian?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The sale of the guy's center.
It's not finalized. I can't talk about anything yet. It's not finalized. There was some issues, sorry. There were some issues with the initial inspection, which has led the highest bidder to go back and consider a potential new price, which ultimately can affect whether or not they are the highest bidder at that point. So until essentially the new numbers come in to dictate what is the highest offer at this point, there is no deal on the table right now that has a confirmed purchase order. So there's nothing I can put out into the public.
Um, wait.
That was the same, I had the same question.
I wasn't finished.
Yeah. And I mean, when, when I wrote my master, or when I wrote my master plan, when I wrote my manager's report, the offer was in and the inspection was happening. So everything happened after this went out to you guys. So that's why this is not necessarily accurate of where we are today.
This moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Two more things. Fifth and Sixth Streets, the construction vehicles are heavily going in Fifth and Sixth Street. I'm getting reports from the people that live down there. We only had a bond on Sixth Street. We didn't have a bond on Fifth Street that I know of. No bond?
I've been down there and seen.
Oh, I'm getting complaints that those guys are hauling the big trucks down there.
I had the people on the streets that followed personally, get some of those trucks are driving.
Yeah.
And I know Jay's been coming in off of a pickup.
Not all of them. Some of them are coming in on Fifth Street now. I got a Fifth Street person telling me that they're coming in off that because they can make the turn better. And he says, "Those are coming in there." And I did talk to one over on Sixth Street, and they have been heavily using those two roads. So we need to make sure that they're not, okay? So that's one thing. I told them I'd bring it up because they brought it to me. There was no UHY invoices in here. Are we gonna get a new UHY invoice for this month?
So, yes, there will be. I had asked them to double, I had asked them to hurry up their bill for July because of when our meeting was. So if you remember, last month was actually a double of June and July, but typically, they send it later into the month. So sometimes it doesn't make it in time for the packet. And because our meeting is the 15th of how this, the third week fell this week, no, I don't have the bill yet. But yes, you'll be getting one.
We already got July.
That's what I'm saying. They gave me July's early so we could make last month's meeting.
All right.
But they didn't get me August in time.
So as soon as you get one, you can send that out to us?
Yeah, it'll be in the next packet.
We can't get it before that?
I, I can. I've never sent it out separate, but I can.
Well, I'd like to see it before the next packet if possible. It's a month away. So if we can, I'd like to, I'd like to see that ahead of time.
That's fine.
Um, that's it for now.
Anyone else for city manager? Commissioner Privilege, let's go right down the line. Lisa?
All right. So, at our last meeting, it was stated that the city did a search, and the insurance company never, ever came to any of our meetings. Well, here it is. Here's an agenda. So this proves that the way you're sorting or doing your searches is incorrect. This was done in July. It's 2016. Sometimes, these were for a couple years, so it wouldn't have been done again for a little bit. But here's nickel and sass. Here's the other proposal. We did it under new business. I also talked to several people that worked here for a long time that said, "Always, always have those contracts come before this commission." So I'm sorry to say, even though you did your search, your search is not correct because here's the proof right here, and here's the two things for the, one of the ones that I have. So I'm sure.
for the, one of the ones that I have, so I'm sure there's more out there, because I was assured...
What years, what years are those, Lisa?
This one I had, I went through some old packets, this was a 16.
And that was when the insurance went out for bid?
Yeah.
Is that what it is, a bid?
Well, these were quotes, but it still came before us, and it came out as quotes, so all I'm saying is, it has always come before this commission, I mean, I've been on here 12 years, I've seen it numerous times, in fact, I think Mr. Saff even showed up for this particular meeting.
Wasn't it stated that it was, came before a commission annually?
They're not always done annual, sometimes we do them multiple years.
I think the statement was that it came annually.
So the last time it was done was 2016?
No, I'm just saying, I found this one for 2016. Okay, I don't keep every single thing, but I happen to be going through some of my stuff, but for, to say that we don't ever do this, and there's no way to do a proper search on this without going through this stuff, so here's the proof right there, so I wanted to give you that one, and you did say that, uh, UHY will be out of here by October 1st, correct?
That is the goal, as of right now.
Alright.
There's no reason they shouldn't be.
And I guess that's, that's it.
Commissioner Claussen?
I have nothing at this time, I'm sorry I missed the planning commission meeting, so I can't give a report on that, but I was in a, uh, excuse me, I was in the hospital, uh, getting a grandson.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations. Commissioner Callahan?
I have nothing this evening.
Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Ross?
Just everybody be safe out there, and, uh, take care. And call me if you need anything, I only received emails from basically one resident this, this month, so...
That's a good thing.
No, I want to hear from my constituents.
Um, I just have a few things, um, so if I tell you that the sky is green, the sky is green, the sky is green, if I keep saying it, will you start believing it? Even though we see the fact that the sky is blue, if you're being told something over and over and over again, we start to question the truth, and we start to doubt the facts. This is exactly what is happening in our city. You are being told untruthful statements over and over and over again. Untrue statements are being posted on social media as well, and that is wrong. We are here to give factual information, even though we agree or not. Our city attorney is asked to give legal opinion on all sensitive subjects. He does his research, and he gives factual findings and legal findings, all based on fact. Our job as commissioners is to look at all this information, whether we like it or not, and make decisions based on what is best for the taxpayers and the city. Social media used to be a nice place to catch up with family and friends near and far. Some social media sites have turned into a den of hate and deception. Facebook is now known as Fakebook. Ladies and gentlemen, you do not know who is a true person and who is a made-up scammer trying to get you to believe all kinds of garbage. There are people posting things on social media using false names, faces, and pictures. There is absolutely no record of their existence, yet they are using Fakebook to talk about sensitive subjects and give totally false information. These scammers are luring you into a form of a relationship, but they don't exist. Do you know how easy it is to create a fake person on social media? Make up a name, get a fake email address, and they are in business to scam you into believing that they are real, but they are not. Please be cautious. The city staff administrat-, the city administration staff and the city commissioners are here to help. We are here to answer questions, or if we don't have answers, to point you in the right direction so your questions can be answered. Recently, your city staff and commissioners have been inundated with emails from a select few citizens. These emails have included such, such things as demands for information that is not yet public, complaints that have been previously addressed, though the answer was maybe not what they wanted to hear, or the sender's personal opinions related to community leaders. While every individual is entitled to their opinion, and every individual is entitled to send emails, what they are not entitled to do is a constant repetitive response, especially when those responses require legal opinions, or are not yet a matter, matter of public record. No matter how demanding their tone, no resident should ever have a direct line to information before it is presented to the commission, or made a matter of public record for the viewing by the public as a whole at the same time, and residents should not be making any sort of threat to our city employees, regardless of how subtle. As leaders, we strongly encourage people to communicate with us, we want to help, we want to know what we can do better, we want open lines of communication. However, excessive daily emails make productivity in our city offices an uphill battle. I urge everyone to look around, properties are being cleaned up, obsolete ordinances are being rewritten, new productive ordinances are being presented and enacted, new businesses are choosing to build here. We are seeking out more grant funding than we have in decades. We have a new marina in the works, a project that has previously been just sitting in the master plan for a very long time, and we are involving the next generation in beautification projects around our city. These are things that the city is working on, on a day-to-day basis. If our time was not being spent on the negative narrative of the few, imagine how much more the city could accomplish for our community as a whole. Instead of time writing excessive negative emails or engaging in the negative Facebook rhetoric, I have an idea, help clean our parks, or spread the word about spaces available in our vacant buildings. Ask your friends and family if they know anyone who owns a business franchise that might be interested in choosing Marine City for a new location. We invite you to come to a Community Economic Development Board meeting to share your ideas about what you would like to see in our town. Every idea, like small landscaping projects to large-scale requests for new playground equipment, are welcome. We would love to hear from you, and how you would like to grow our community. We had a resident request a skate park several months back, which was a great suggestion, and on, and although it might take time to come to fruition, we have not forgotten. These are the interactions we should strive for. Dirty water doesn't stop plants from growing, so don't let negative words stop your progress. And with that, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Like to make a motion to move into closed session under MCL 15 dot 26H, H, H, 268H.
Support.
We have a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes. 9:38.
Bye, guys.
Good night.
See you soon.